Uh, now that we are streaming, I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, May twenty fourth, twenty twenty third, twenty twenty three. Uh, we'll start with roll call. Um, Stevie Antonio, I'm here. Josh Mickelson.
Present.
Larry Boardman.
Yeah.
Ram Kaza.
I'm here.
Joanne Hogan.
Present.
Mark Freeman.
Here.
And that establishes the quorum, so we'll move right forward with application Z B A twenty three dash zero two of Raising Cane's Restaurant LLC applicant Simsbury Commons LLC owner. For variance, uh, uh, to four, there are four point three of the Simsbury zoning regulations to reduce the side yard setback. From forty feet to thirty six feet to accommodate the construction of two drive through canopies. It was originally proposed as an eighteen foot plus or minus setback at the property located at five thirty Bushy Hill Road. Uh, who is here to present on behalf of the applicant?
Mister Chairman, T J Donahue here to present on behalf of the applicant Kings. All set?
Yeah, whenever you're ready.
Great. We're very appreciative of the board's consideration of our application at the last meeting and continuing it until this time. So that we could review comments and considerations of the board and staff report in all of our circumstance. In doing so, we've removed the overhang canopy. And we've reduced the variance significantly to less than three feet in two areas adjacent to the building. Which would enable our operation to exist and us to have a, a, a drive through facility. We've also continued to work with the neighbor, uh, which has been a very positive experience. And, uh, we have presented a, a, a letter to you, uh, where they endorse our application significantly. We've reviewed your staff report and, uh, it's straightforward. Uh, I'll, I'll tick through the elements as we see them. Uh, special conditions, this is a unique parcel. It's a ground lease within the Simsbury Commons, which is under a full development plan already. The development will be on existing hardscape. The existing parking and the existing travel lanes. It's unique. The parking will not comport with the project without the three feet relief. It would cause seven spaces to be eliminated and necessitate a larger easement considerate consideration, and it wouldn't support the business model. Also unusual is that the parcel and the mall exist in two different towns. Which have different setbacks. One's twenty feet, one's forty feet. And that's just kind of a unique factor, but it, it does undermine a principle of general principle zoning of having uniformity. And having streetscapes which, which roll the same. The condition of the property, it, this is constrained by existing site conditions, including parking, travel lanes and circulation. Our efforts are to comply in all possible regards as the table shows and seek the minimal relief to accommodate our proven model. The situation is totally unique. It's fully hardscaped. It's in two towns. It's unique in use and service to Simsbury in that it's the only significant retail mall in Simsbury. The existing hardscape uses location potential for the desired use must fit and, and, and complement the Simsbury Commons place. Your fifth criteria doesn't fit. It complies with all other, entirely with all other zoning requirements. It fits in with the mall, which is a special place in the Planet Conservation Development. It's mentioned as something that's a significant, unique. Feature of Simsbury, which has a benefit and value. It fits in with the Planet Conservation Development because it's a restaurant and a commercial use, and we seek that type of growth and development in town. In fact, the study with the new Planet Conservation Development showed. That is, there's a great appetite among Simsbury residents for uses and for new youth, new food uses, and this would be one. And finally, COVID has proved the high desirability of driving facilities under certain, uh, condi- health conditions in the community. It's compliment, you ask if it's complimentary and fits in, it's complimentary to all of the adjacent partials and degrading to none. It sits on forty four, it's adjacent to the gentleman's warehouse facility. And, uh, and, and the rest of the mall, and it, and it fits in beautifully. So our circumstances, it helps the health of the mall and commercial use of the land base in Simsbury. There's a community desire for restaurant uses like this. The variance requested is very small. After board discussion, it's been trimmed to the minimum needed. And we appreciate the opportunity to come back and, and present this to you. The awnings themselves are a great benefit to Cane's, a benefit to the staff and customers and to the town. You, you have to measure reasonableness. Mister Chairman, very respectfully, that's your jurisdiction and that's yours. But we hope we've overcome that bar, particularly with the very significant reduction in what we're asking for. So we submit the granting is consistent with the Planet Conservation Development and will complete zoning compliance with no further issue. So we're very appreciative of your consideration, and I'd like to just call Jeff Board. To tell you the specifics of the exact variance that we see.
Thank you, TJ. Uh, for the record, my name is Jeff Board, professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Bowler Engineering at sixty five LaSalle Road in West Hartford, Connecticut. I'm going to share my screen here. Let me know if you guys can see my screen in the PDF that's up here. Everybody see that? Oh, great, okay. So as TJ alluded to, um, it's a unique site in the sense that. There's an existing facility, um, operating as a bank in the adjacent town, which. We need to maintain this twenty four foot drive aisle and vehicular access to these two driveways right here. So when you start looking at the development and all the different ways that, you know, this could be developed. Um, we're basically starting at this drive aisle edge here and then working our way in this direction. So one of the benefits of a building like this is how narrow this is. Um, and for, for commercial development as this, um, that, that's one of the benefits is how, how small it is in footprint. This is the narrowest it can be from a parking standpoint, a drive aisle, and then even the sidewalk in between. So what we've done, as TJ had alluded to, was we took this old plan. If you guys can see this one here, this was the, the larger of the canopy structures, which was setback nineteen point three feet off of the property line. So it was about a twenty point seven foot, um, difference to get to the setback. And what we've done is come in and that north awning. We have matched it basically with the pickup window. So really, all that's doing now is providing cover to the exchange of cash here and food here, um, and nothing more. So we really did listen to the feedback, reduced it down to what is now, um, a thirty seven point two. Foot dimension off of the property line or two point eight feet over the setback line. And then this one is slightly, um, different at two point six feet. So that's just due to the rotation and the angle of the drive aisle that we matched over here. So it's been largely reduced, and I thought one of the, the telling images. Um, you guys can see this image. This is what we had previously shared with you all at the last meeting, which showed that. Structure with the column coming down, um, and what you see if I zoom in here is that the, the cash window. Awning is basically what we're matching now, and this large canopy is no longer there. So on our exhibits here, we updated everything you saw last time. Um, including this blow up with the dimensions. Uh, that similar landscape buffer exhibit that we had a professional landscape architect prepare, um, along the frontage and that western boundary line. And then the last piece, if you recall that other rendering I just had up. Basically, this is where that canopy structure had come out with the column coming down. So now all you see is basically the same awning slash canopy for, for both the cash and the pickup window. That's big picture, the changes that we made coming from our last meeting, um, was to really reduce this down to. Bare minimum of what was needed for the, for the facility here.
Mister Chairman, that completes our presentation unless we have any questions. We'd certainly be happy to answer any questions, yeah.
I do have a quick, first of all, Amanda, let the record show that Sharon Thomas is seated. She joined, um. Prior to the presentation. However, my question getting back to it, we got a letter of support from M I J I, I believe is the name of it. Uh, um, excuse my naivety, but what is that facility?
That facility is the old Acme Auto, which you'll recall, Mister Chairman, from the early days in Simsbury, and it's now a men's clothing store.
I believe you just called me old. That, that's great to know though, because that is the one neighbor that, um, you know, has any effect from this variance you're requesting. So thank you. I assumed that it was that, but I did not want to assume any further. Right out of the gate, before we poll the commissioners, let me just state from my own perspective that. You really came back with a greatly reduced plan. We appreciate you taking our input and working with us. I honestly don't have any questions, so I'm going to move right through and poll our commissioners for their opinions. And any potential questions they might have. Yeah, Sharon, you don't have to raise your hand.
I wasn't here when this was originally presented, but I, I think I have an idea where it is. Is this over? Um, off of forty four where men's warehouse is?
Directly adjacent to it, man.
Okay, that, okay.
You know where Bed Bath and Beyond is, right?
Well, no, I know where, well, that's further. Is it going to be in that space? Because Bed Bath and Beyond is gone, gonna be leaving.
No, no, that's still there. That'll be.
It's in front of, it's in front of that space right on forty four.
It's closer, I'm thinking it's closer to the men's warehouse where Santana Bank, where the bank is, is right there.
Yeah, it's right in this, it's right in this plaza right here. Yep.
That's right.
And that, that drive aisle that I mentioned was basically maintaining this drive aisle and then these two entrances to that adjacent parcel. So it's sitting right here. And that letter, that letter came from these folks here to the west.
So right if, looking at this picture here, no, 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 throw it back up. Look, okay, so where's the where, where's the other problem? Men's warehouse is where? Right there. Okay, and you're talking about going right where? Okay, got it. That's what I, okay.
And that, that enhanced landscape buffer was basically in this area here and then wrapping around the corner. Right here. So when you go back to, um, give me one second here and I'll show that.
So that side that you had where you had like this side where the drive through and everything, is that going to be facing the where? The store of the men's wear, is it on that side?
So the men's warehouse, if you see the screen here, it's just right, this is the edge of their building with their driveway to the back marketing area.
Okay.
It's going to be screened by, by this landscape.
By the buffer, the buffer, okay.
That awning that we're referring to is basically right, right here.
Yes, okay, got it. So they, it'll be buffered. That's what I was wondering. Okay.
Okay, moving along. Josh, how about you? Any comments or questions?
No, um, a- all of my questions were answered, um, at the last meeting. Um, we gave them, you know, some requests to try and reduce that. Um, variance as much as possible. And it looks like they've come back to us, um, having taken all our requests.
All right, moving right along. Larry Boardman, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I think they, uh, took what we suggested and I think it's workable.
All right, Ram Kaza, any questions or comments?
Uh, just a comment. I mean, uh, they came back with the minimum variance now, and also. There is an approval from the neighbor. Um, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, moving along. Joanne Hogan.
I'm all set. Sounds clear.
And last but certainly not least, Mark Freeman.
Yes, um, again, like Sharon, I was not here, uh, for the, for the last meeting. But, um, seems like they've accommodated whatever concerns there were, so I don't have any questions.
Okay, with that, go ahead.
So I have one more. So I hear that. So that, so all neighbors surrounding them are aware and have approved?
They don't necessarily have to respond that they approve, but they've all been notified as part of the application process. Only men's warehouse chose to write a letter in support.
Okay, okay.
Is there anything else though, before we close that application, in which case they won't be able to respond? So last call for questions. Hearing none, and moving forward, I might like to make a motion that we close application Z B A twenty three dash zero two. Of Raising Cane's Restaurant LLC applicant Simsbury Commons LLC owner. Would someone like to second that? Second to it. All those in favor, I.
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 It's too many faces, so is anyone opposed or against? Okay, it's unanimous. Um, okay, now time for the commissioners to deliberate. Um, we can of course ask any questions of town staff. I don't have any questions myself, so I open the floor to anybody else that has any questions. That being said, I would like to acknowledge the one, or rather reiterate at this point. The one neighbor affected wrote a positive letter reinforcing, and I truly feel that the applicant put due diligence in and came back with the minimum request. And the hardship would be the shape of the lot, the configuration of the parking area. The existing uses of the property it fits in with, and there's an inconsistency between the budding town zoning regulations. Last but not least, the forty yard, forty foot side yard setback. It's a, it's a light commercial building to the west of it. So the setback, not that it's not important, but the effect is not like butting a residential house. So, um, I, I do consider that part of it. Who else would like to speak against or for the application before we go to a vote? Okay, seeing no reason to take longer than we need to, would someone, um. Like to make a motion, or you want me to do it with the hardships listed again, or does someone else want to take crack at?
You can do it.
Steven, why don't you do it since you've got the hardships clear in your head?
Hold on, let me toggle over to my T G.
Toggle, go, go ahead.
Ah, crap, I toggled to the wrong T G. Bear with me, I apologize. Okay, good. I'd like to make a motion to approve application Z B A twenty three dash zero two of Raising Cane's Restaurant LLC applicant. Simsbury Commons LLC owner for variance to paragraph four point three of the Simsbury zoning regulations. To reduce the side yard setback from forty feet to plus or minus thirty six feet for the construction of a drive through canopy, a window canopy. At the property located at five thirty of Pop Meadow Street. This is a B three zone, and the hardship is the shape of the lot, the configuration of the parking areas. The existing uses of the property. There is also an inconsistency between a budding town's zoning regulations. And the forty foot side yard setback is not as necessary a cushion between two commercial structures. Would someone like to second that motion?
I will, Sharon.
All right, all those in favor, I.
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 And to make sure we've got everybody, is anyone opposed?
Or abstain.
Okay, and Mark Freeman is abstaining. With that being said though. Um, congra- congra- well, not congratulations, but thank you for taking the time to present and take our input into effect. And we wish you great, um, success with your project.
Thank you very much. We think the process works and we certainly appreciate your consideration and your favorable vote. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, moving right along. I'd like to bring up application Z B A twenty three dash zero three of Christopher Quimby owner for variance to paragraph three point nine. Of the Simsbury zoning regulations to reduce the side yard setback from forty feet to twenty nine feet plus or minus. For the construction of a garage addition at the property located at fifty eight Terry, Terry's Plain Road. Um, would someone like to present on behalf of the applicant?
I have, I'm the owner, Christopher Quimby.
So we do have like a overview in our packet, but would you like to give a, um. A verbal accompaniment to what's going on?
Uh, that'd be great, thank you. Um, so my first time and I'll follow your lead on, on process. Um, you know, much like everybody else in, in COVID, we sat home a lot and said, you know, what are we, what are we doing? And what are we going to do around the house? Uh, and we looked around and said, we love the house, we love our neighborhood, we love Simsbury. Uh, we love our neighbors, it's, it's a big part of the equation and said. Let's double down and really think what, um, we want to make sure that we can do to the home and that would make it our forever home. Part of that is a little bit more storage, and, and that's what this focuses on. The backside of, of, um, the home, it kind of leads up to the mountain of Talkeet Mountain. The front leads out to Terry's Plain Road. Uh, one side is kind of a, a, as you can see on the lot line, a propane tank and an easement. So on the backside of the garage, we said this is a good place for storage. Um, decent size for patio furniture, other things in, in life that, you know, most people throw in the shed that is, that is detached. Which really isn't an, an option for this property due to the elevation. Um, that's what brings me here is an initial ideation. The variance request is, is kind of rooted in the exceptional lot size. If you look on, you know, the, the lot planned site. The left side of the page shows a straight line with a sharp curve in that, you know, if it were a rectangle, you know, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation. But due to the build of that lot, um, line years ago. Uh, it does present an exceptional lot shape, configuration. And then the geography and topography of the lot itself, um, kind of leaves us with little options. And we're sitting here going, all right, this is what we want to do, and, and let's see, um, if we can get the exception. Um, we've evaluated a number of alternatives. Uh, I can provide more information, but you know, being focusing on brevity and clarity, I'll turn it back to any initial questions that. You know, maybe are in there that I can help answer, or how can I help you, uh, evaluate?
So I, I did look at the elevations, but it didn't seem, let me toggle. Really in the mood to toggle tonight. Um, substantial elevation changes, what, to cut to the chase, why couldn't this be moved? Um, as you're looking at it from, you know, a bird's eye view, to the left of the garage. You know, slide it to the west, I guess it would be, or maybe the south.
Um, I, I can't tell, I can't remember which way is west and south.
Do you mean closer to the road, Steven?
Yes, like. Yeah, that.
Terry's plane.
So i- if you go closer to Terry's plane, uh, I called the Farmington Valley Health Department and asked for their evaluation on this. And they said that due to the location of the septic, um, being in, in front of that. Uh, they heavily advised against it to ensure that, you know, there was appropriate surrounding area and safety.
So your septic tank is in front of the garage, like to the, it's in front of the garage, kind of, then.
Right of the garage, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And, and it comes out to the, the, the front lawn where the, uh, the fields are.
Yeah, the leach field is there. That's what we're talking about is the back of the leach field. The actual tank per the, um, the diagram is actually halfway up the driveway. Well, not from the road, halfway between the garage and that ninety degree angle part of the driveway. Which is why I can't understand why it can't be moved to the left. You seem to have the footage. I mean, it would definitely be a stacked offset type thing, but. It seems like there's the footage there if you did slide it to the left. And just for clarification, um, we're not talking about the proposed addition on the further from the roadside. That's all within the parameters, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So again, in considering a hardship, why can't it just be moved to the left? Or I'm sorry, towards the road?
Towards the road.
Yep, the, the width is about, uh, exactly, it's called twenty five, third, twenty eight feet. If you were to take that same twenty eight feet, you'd have about a, uh, eleven foot drop in elevation, um, towards the end. You'd be building an eleven foot tall cement pad that would stare at the road and. Be one, generally unnatural. Two, there would be no access point because it would, um, follow the shape of the, the, the lawn coming down in the front. Um, so if you, if you needed to get in there, you know, put a riding lawnmower, you know, pick something. You would have to figure out a way to then, then build a ramp in the front, um, that also would continue the width of that cement pad. Um, heavily advised against, one, from a, a couple of construction, um, companies in the area. And two, from a practicality perspective, uh, it would probably be a blight for the neighborhood of. You know, uh, five hundred square feet of concrete facing the road.
Laura, I can't read the elevation lines, even when I blow it up. Can you read them by chance on your copy? Is Laura with us? What happened to Laura? Oh, there she is. Brittany, did you answer it?
Brittany, yeah, so which elevations, and you mean in the front of the house?
Um.
Going towards Terry, Terry's.
So looking at the proposed sanitary system of Gary Swain is the one that has elevations that I had. I'll address for that. Um, and there's elevation lines, but I can't.
So, right, right, so it, it looks approximately at the corner of the garage is a hundred and ninety. Elevation, and then it goes down one eighty eight, one eighty seven, one eighty six, as it goes towards Terry, Terry's Plain Road. So it's a downslope from the home to the road.
That seems more like four or five feet if I'm following correctly. Is that correct?
What's, what's for, I'm not following.
The elevation of the garage versus the elevation at the innermost corner of the leach field. Which I also want to reiterate is a leach field.
Right, so it looks like it's, yeah. So the corner of the garage is a hundred and ninety one feet, and then toward the leach field is a hundred and eighty six going down.
So five feet.
Yeah.
Brittany, do you have this that you could show it up on your screen or no?
I'm looking at the, um, the back of my staff report.
Yeah, I haven't pulled up if you want me to share it.
Josh with the tech savvy, thanks, Josh.
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, thank you.
Because it just helps for us to be able to.
Having said Josh hasn't been able to, I can also. There we go. Yeah, exactly.
Oh, man, too far. So it's this we're talking about right here, right?
Okay.
Right, but that's a contour line, so as you go to your top left, that first one is a contour line. It's not the leach field. The leach field is like that double barrel thing that's a little further, just beyond the one hundred and eighty six foot line, I think is. What we're just told. You know, I know it's not ideal, but you can do foundations that are, uh, cloaked. And they now have vinyl stonework as well as obviously real stonework. And there's a multitude of things where concrete is exposed visually. Um, that honestly can come out quite nice, and we avoid the variance this way. Um, you know, I'm, I'm reticent to even bring it up because I hate to be, you know, that guy. But we are not allowed to just grant variances whenever we have to try and find solutions. And this seems like somewhat of a viable solution, albeit not ideal. It does provide an option. Um, let's, how about?
I beg to differ. How do you, it's so if, if we're drawing a picture where the mouse is right now. And you go twenty eight feet to the left, down into the, you know, near the, the leach fields. One, which is heavily advised against a, um, environmentally conscious organization that would probably have to overrule. Or change an existing, um, permit. How do you get into the garage itself? There is then a, 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 an at least five to ten foot drop that creates an angle that you would then have to fill in. Cave over the grass, cave over the septic tank opening, and then. Somehow unnaturally designed for what is an abutting street to a historic district.
Is there something obstructing the north and east sides? I mean, that's two sides of a three side building. Is there an opening through the garage? We don't have any of those details. So as far as I know, I don't understand the obstruction. And what environmental organization has advised against it, just so we can take that into consideration? Of course, we're interested.
Uh, right, the Farmington Valley Health District, uh, Diane Harding and Patricia Gigliotti were the advisors. And said, um, highly advised against it. As an option.
Doing any construction or just getting near the leach field? Is there a setback area to the leach field?
Disrupting, um, in an otherwise environmentally sound area, were their exact terms. Um, among other components.
Well, that would say, don't put a file, are you doing a slab foundation? Your proposal, or is it?
Would, would go in the back. You see where it, it's showing on the screen, and I wish I was as tech savvy at the moment. It's on the back of the garage, um, and it would be a slab foundation there, which is a generally flat area at the moment. Um, you know, there, there might be. With sixty eight inch slab foundation going in, or whatever the recommendation is from the construction.
How are you going to enter this new building? Is it, is it going to be big enough for a vehicle, or is it just storage?
Uh, the primary goal is storage, um.
So does it have a garage? So does it have a garage door facing the road?
No, no, it would be an extension of, that wall, the existing back wall of the garage now would just be gone into a larger storage area.
I see. So you're basically expanding the existing garage?
Right.
Okay. Okay, so I understand then why you want to put it abutting the existing building. Because you're, you're basically knocking out the side wall of the garage or the back wall?
Yep, you, you nailed it.
To expand it to be wider. Okay.
Yep.
I think I'm looking at this, I, I question if you would even, like if you did move it over here, wouldn't it, it would probably go over the leach field, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I was never advising for that. I was the existing footprint, move it to the left.
Move it to the left, not in.
Okay, so keep, keep it behind.
Yeah, it would be just literally slide it forward toward Terry's plane.
Exactly.
But if the, if the land slopes there, then it messes up the idea of the slab.
But it does slope if we go to the topographical anyways, there's a contour line that follows exactly where we're talking about. No, back down, Josh.
Go back down, yeah.
See how that contour line actually goes right there? It follows the garage, it's actually outside of the garage floor imprint. So there's no topographical change technically.
Tell me about the people, your neighbors on that side.
I was saying, they're actually on the call and, you know, have not negated this as something that we would attempt to do. We said, you know, we brought it to everybody in the area and then submitted the application and they were formally notified. Nobody said, please don't do this. In fact, we went to them all and said, we're thinking of do this. We don't really want to spend, you know, the time and money and permit if, if it's not going to be a good idea. So generally, everybody's understanding of what we're looking to do.
I'm Nikki San Ferreira. I'm the budding neighbor on sixty Terry's Plain Road. I actually, we really like the Quimby family and they're a great family and they have a beautiful home. And we want them to certainly achieve their, their desires for their dream home here. But Chris was very kind and transparent with us back in March and talked to us about it. And we definitely actually don't mind it, the extension of the garage that would be going back there. I think there's this little part that I'm hoping for, because we do like the Quimby so much, I'm hoping there could be something worked out. But I think there's a little bit, we did express a little bit of a concern when he talked to us over a balcony that they're discussing about putting up there. I'm hoping that could be something that could get figured out, but otherwise we, we don't mind the storage itself.
You mean a balcony up on the roof of the structure?
Right.
And I think that was probably a point of confusion. You know, when you have like a colonial rail up top to kind of match an old colonial home, you know, as, as a decorative design, that was it. That's definitely not in the cards at all. So that's on me for being ambiguous. I should have probably been more descriptive.
Oh, does it have a, so it has a, I would assume it has a sloped roof, not a flat roof?
That was kind of up for debate. It's, it's not finalized yet. I didn't want to. It's not defined because I'm frankly waiting to ensure that you were all good with it first.
If you're gonna take out the back wall of the garage, you're gonna have to extend the trusses though. Not to be getting too much into the building aspect of such.
It's not a full new peak of the garage. It's only the existing nine feet of the back of the garage. Nine, nine foot height.
Okay, so you're just gonna put a a beam to carry the weight? And have columns?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, and Nikki, does your Dave, does your husband, I'm assuming Dave is your husband? I should not have assumed that. I apologize.
Yes, he is.
Would, does he have any input as far as this?
He shares the same feeling I did. Chris and Dave spoke back in March, which again, we appreciate Chris for reaching out to us back then. We expressed the same concerns that we did not mind them expanding their garage again at the time. And, and you know, maybe things have changed since I spoke to the Quimby's over the weekend. But the only concern we had was the patio if they decide to do that. Otherwise, we do not have any concerns.
Okay, thank you very much. And not to call it out, but is there anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of this application, either in support or with concerns? I see one other person in our meeting. Okay, hearing nothing, that's totally fine. Let's poll the commissioners before we close the application and deliberate amongst ourselves for last minute questions. Just so you understand what, I'm sorry, what happens here, Chris is, so the next step is we close it and we deliberate and then we come up with a solution that will approve. Or honestly, there's another option where we table and ask you to come back with perhaps thinking some other alternatives, which is the next ZBA meeting. It's, we try to give you as little red tape as possible, but sometimes as you saw in the first presentation, it does take two times to get it fully through where we've met all the criteria we have to meet. So when we close the application, we're not allowed to talk to you. So that's why I poll all the members to make sure if they have any questions that they ask you now. So with that being said, we'll go in a random order. Josh Mickelson, questions or comments?
So I just want to make sure that when you were talking about earlier, moving it to the left, were you just saying, just make it flush with the point of the garage that's closest to the road?
Yeah, that's where it was.
Okay, I, I think, I think I agree with you. That's a, a pretty reasonable change. It doesn't, looking at the elevation map, I don't think that's a huge difference and it would reduce the setback and get us closer towards that minimum necessary setback.
Yeah.
Right, variance, not setback.
Right, but it's.
Am I allowed to talk or did you mean I'm, I'm done as of?
No, no, you can talk. That's why we're doing this now.
Josh, I appreciated you bringing up that image. I, I shared a picture of the road, you know, the hundred and twenty or so feet away that I think actually gives you a pretty good visual of how hard it would be to do what you're saying. If, if you, if it's possible to bring that up, it's the view of Terry's Plain Road from the road. This picture right here, it's on this side.
Yeah.
I know this is a horrible image, but if you're looking at it from, you know, just right in front of the road, the, kind of behind that tree is, is what you're suggesting. See how it slopes down a good, I, I know the document says five feet, but you know, a- as you move down twenty-eight feet or so to the left, it's a it would become prohibitive in almost every way physically imaginable.
Yes and no, Chris. I'm, I'm old, so I remember when that was a field and it didn't have those elevation changes in as much as you can add fill. Is there a reason that you could not just add fill if you wanted to have a non-exposed foundation? Why couldn't you just to simplify, overly simplify it? Put some dirt under the foundation and build the bank up to the existing. We're not talking about going down. We're talking about going up in elevation.
I, I agree. So you would you would have a wall of dirt facing the road as a fill? I'm, I'm just, I'm not as creative as.
Do you have grass on your dirt or do you just have dirt?
I, I beg your pardon?
You have grass on the dirt or do you just have dirt?
I, I have grass now.
I think that, I think Stephen's vision would be that it would this, he, you would add fill and slope it gradually toward the road and regrass it. It wouldn't be like a wall of dirt. It would.
The elevation as submitted to us has no elevation change. Do you want to go back to it? Because this is open discussion. I want to get your feedback. It's not that I'm just, you know, saying things from on high. Josh, do you want to share a screen again or shall I? With elevations, I just want to drill down and figure out why the the, for lack of a quiet way to say it, pushback. So exactly, zoom down. And those lines are elevation lines. In other words, the lines are the same height as they wiggle through your property. And there is a line that literally goes around the garage, which implies all of that is the exact same footage. And that's why I'm not understanding the dramatic drop would just be a corner of the garage. It would not be the long ways. It would just be that front corner, which of course you would feather into the landscape and grow grass on such. And then if you wanted to ramp it, you would just add additional fill, but it wouldn't even be required. And that's why I see that elevation line. And again, our task with the ZBA is we try to, if we allow a hardship to minimize the impact of the variance. And that's why I'm pushing so hard on this, is it's the same elevation per this, Chris. So I mean, I, I saw your picture, which was from far away, but this map, which is a filed copy of the elevation, says that it's the same height for the vast majority of the garage. Do, do you understand where I'm coming from?
I do on, on the exhibit that's on the page now.
Unless they graded it differently in the field.
Well, yeah, I wonder, my, my question is, is this elevation map accurate to what's actually happening on his property?
A lot of times you can go to the GIS map. I'll toggle over to that. It also has elevation in one foot or five foot increments. So that will also tell us from the GIS, which is the satellite systems. It will tell us what the actual elevation is from the sky, if you will. Terry's Plain Road.
You know, in the staff comment section, Stephen, there's another elevations map.
There is?
I don't know if you saw that one?
No, I did not. So let me go over to that first.
So the second page of staff comment, there's an elevation map?
Brittany McGilpin here, that, that elevation, that topography is from the Simsberry GIS system.
The one on the staff comment?
The one on the staff report, yep.
Which shows a different elevation, Chris. So just to point that out.
Oh, it's, it shows that.
But it shows twelve.
It shows that at the corner of the garage, it's one ninety-one. And then out from it, it's one ninety. It's not vastly different. That's the map I'm looking at.
Yeah, I didn't see that map. So thank you very much for bringing it to me, my attention. But I still, you know, when you put down slab, you have to put stone under it.
And it's not showing that the elevation is vastly different from the corner of the garage, you know. So.
Okay, listen, we, we can do our deliberations during that aspect, but leave that on the, on the screen for now.
Okay.
Larry, do you have any comments or questions?
I'm just curious. I mean, if you do it on the left side, based on this map, it's kind of looking like it's going to encroach on the leach field there.
Well, that's my main concern. It's not the elevation, it's the leach fields.
So w- w- we're talking about keeping it on, on that side of the garage, but just shifting it.
Yeah, just sliding it toward the road.
So it's.
And then it's getting close, it is getting closer to the leach field.
But the leach field looks pretty close.
But you have the foundation of the garage there even closer. So it's because of the, the angles of.
Go back again, go back to that other page.
Yeah, you just had.
You just had it. That, that.
Right there.
Yeah, that shows.
You're as close as the garage, no closer.
It's true.
The end of the leach field, which hopefully there's not much leaching out at that part. The leach field is everyone, not everyone knows, but many know, goes to the left and the right. So one end of the leach field is carrying a minimalistic effect, not that you would ever encroach on it. I'm just saying that I, I, I don't feel we're that close.
So Stephen, you're not proposing that it would go beyond the existing garage toward the road, that it would be even?
And maybe instead of back six inches, you know, just a little reveal.
So I have a question for the applicant. Other than not getting close to the leach field, because the elevation honestly doesn't seem like as big of a deal as, I don't know, unless the map is wrong and your property is more sloped than that. But is there any other reason that you don't want it to be flush with the front of the garage?
One, it's violently unnatural. If you asked an architect to draw that, that would be.
I, I understand that. It's, it's more aesthetically pleasing to have it, have a, have a have a change to the.
I mean, at that point.
Yes, I understand that. Okay.
That, that's a general point. And the other is functionality. I, I know we're talking about that, but the driveway is where the garage ends now. And then it would also be extending the driveway in order to be able to access that with anything, you know.
Are you parking vehicles in it? I thought it was for lawn furniture. I'm sorry, I misunderstood that.
Well, he parks vehicles in the garage and the back end of it is going to have storage.
Okay.
Right.
You know, the other thing that we should have brought up that I just have to bring up because it's a due diligence thing, have you considered putting this elsewhere on the property? In the backyard or something? You can say no, it's just I should bring it up.
No, no, that's, that's kind of what I, what I led with from an alternative evaluation perspective. If you went towards the bottom portion of the page that's showing right now, there's a propane tank that's buried as well as an easement, one. Two, there's, there's a continued elevation going up the hill that is very significant. I think the picture, the other picture I added kind of shows that to a small degree. And, and again, aesthetically, it, it kind of doesn't look that natural as well as kind of steals from the very few square feet of actual lawn that we do have for our children.
Okay, that's fine. Like I said, I just felt that was necessary to, we're supposed to research every possible option. So continuing with polling the commissioners, Sharon, do you have any questions or comments for the applicant?
I don't have any.
That's fine. Ram, Kazza, do you have any?
I'm good.
All right, Mark Freeman?
I, I don't really have any questions. I would agree shifting it to the left would change, would probably make the decision easier for the, for the commission. But no, I don't have any specific questions. And I think, I think what you're saying is, is putting that fill in and you know, feathering that, feathering that fill to, to smooth out whatever elevation change there is might be the best idea, but no, I don't, I don't have any specific questions.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Was that everyone? Did I miss anyone? Feel like I did, but I did.
I, I will say real quick, if, if you think that the, the elevation is actually a bigger change than what we have marked, we could consider, you know, pushing this off till next meeting to see if we, you know, no further research. Like if it is actually different than we have marked, that would change things.
I, I would believe that it's, it's not five feet. I, I, I mean, it could be seven, it could be ten. I'm just not that great standing here right now measuring twenty-eight feet out. However, to delay another thirty days extraordinarily something I, I don't want to do based upon the schedule things that exist in the world right now and inventory and, and timing and frankly, life and children being in school, et cetera. So I, I would prefer not to do that, but if you feel that that's the only opportunity, the only clarifying fact that we need to go through, then I guess I understand.
I have an additional question. Just as I said, I'm going to keep trying to throw it into different ways that perhaps are more acceptable. Would you consider reducing the depth and expanding the width of the proposed addition thereby reducing the?
Yeah, so I evaluated that and the width, if we, to avoid a variance would be three feet. So.
Well, not necessarily to avoid it, but to reduce it. Like a compromise.
Right. Oh, I see. On the left side, as you look at it, you're saying it's a three foot variance and on the right side, it's, it's more.
Yeah, yeah.
But if you made it skinnier, wider and less depth from our perspective that we're looking on the screen, it would reduce the variance. significantly, even more so than shifting it, to be quite frank. You definitely need the, I can't make out how deep this is, sixteen feet. You need sixteen feet of depth. You can say yes, you need it. It's not, it's not a preloaded one.
Or an intended design that fits storage in a, you know, a cabinet and an extra fridge in there, you know, that, uh, that, that was the design we had intended, um, you know, really sketched out on, on paper in my mind. So yeah, that, that was the goal. With the, the dimensions as they exist now.
Do you have any sketches of your proposed addition from an elevation standpoint? By that, I mean, you're looking at it from the side. Cause we talked about different roofs and if it's a concern of how it would tie into the building. You know, you, you're saying aesthetically it would not be pleasing. We, you, we'd have to see why it would not be pleasing, I guess, is the point. I'm going with, if you tie back to the roof, you could nudge it pretty close.
I, I don't have alternative sketches, uh, that would align to what you were suggesting. I, I do have, uh, initial architects' thoughts that, um, do show, um, unfortunately, they came in after the, uh.
Are they on your computer by chance?
They are. I'm trying to find them very quickly for your convenience.
Yes, please. That would be a great asset.
I'm not.
It's okay if it takes a minute.
Not succeeding.
Yeah, it helps to see the, 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 uh, some kind of drawing of what it actually will look like from the road.
All right, I have one up. I mean, it's pretty crude, but, uh, how do I, how do I share my screen?
So along the bottom, it, there's a box, the second one next to.
Oh, you mean in the painfully obvious section? I am blind. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Share. So.
Beautiful.
All right.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So, I mean, this is just, you know, us in, in my kitchen with, um, an architect saying, hey, there's a box off, um.
So what's the plan for the roof? Is it still going to be a flat roof?
It will, three dimensionally, it's this. Um, there's an existing, um, window here. There's an existing window here and it would be just essentially a box, you know, off the back with like a colonial chair railing. Um, you know, and then that's it.
Is that, uh, uh, I'm having a brain fart. The dormer, for lack of the right term, it's bigger than a dormer in this scenario.
There, yeah, this, this, yeah, this is.
Well, that's a dormer.
Yeah, that's. Yep, um.
Is it there now?
With a window, yeah.
It, it is there now?
It is there now. Yeah. The only thing new is essentially is this, uh, rectangular box here.
Okay. So I understand the aesthetic advantage to setting it back and not having it flush with the front of the house. I do understand an architect's preferring that.
Yeah, cause you can't do a gable roof or anything on it now that I.
Right. And it would just, it, I, yeah, that's usually having it set back is, is more pleasing aesthetically. Um.
Unless you, you take that left side, um, and, and put it there, but try to keep it narrow. Uh, you have the depth of the garage, but as far as how far out it extends, uh, you know, I'm, I'm more concerned with that leech field, but if it doesn't affect it, um, you can follow that same roof line, uh, on extension. I, I've done it, so I know. Uh, you can even step it kind of with the picture shows.
I didn't follow that. Do you mind repeating it? I'm sorry, I was looking.
Okay. I, I'm looking at the left side of the garage. And saying if that side of the garage was brought out, let's say sixteen feet, and it was just extended out, following the same roof and everything else. It's just a, not a box, but full extension.
But that does bring it closer to the leech fields. That does.
Yeah, I don't know how much space there is between that. I mean, if you went six, I don't know how deep the garage is, but if you went sixteen feet out and the full depth of the garage, I don't know whether that's sufficient.
That's a much more involved addition.
Oh, it is. It is.
Yeah.
Because you're now extending everything, the roof and everything else at the same time.
Well, and it also changes the proportions of the front of the garage greatly.
Yeah.
With the doors and all that.
But that being said, the sixteen foot width, as we're looking at this way, it looks like a big add-on circling back to that possibly wider and less deeper.
Yeah.
Aesthetically reduce it and still keep it centered on the dormer. So you would have access, not that we are advocating, or that's a whole nother thing we can touch on as far as whether there's access to the patio, if you will, especially in light of Nikki speaking out, but, um, you know, that would yield you the same square footage of storage and at least what I've heard, you know, it's not, I'm trying to think of how to articulate it. Um, I haven't heard of anything that requires a sixteen foot depth versus a twelve foot depth and a wider stance, especially if you're carrying your load bearing uh, onto columns. It, it's, it yields the same thing with less of a variance.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something you'd consider, Chris, or you're adamantly opposed to it?
Um, I mean, we had an interior design, um, sketched up that we wanted to go with that we either have to significantly shift. And it also takes the way, uh, sixteen feet is about a Honda these days. And, you know, my kids are driving and the number of crimes in town, I'd love to have their cars inside the garage. So that option years down the road, my son's eight, eight years down the road, might be the time I actually finish this project. Um, so, uh, that does take away kind of optionality within the house and future safety for them. Um, we've got a little girl too, who'll also be driving one day, so.
This isn't.
Let's take it away from both the interior design and that option.
You can't park a car in a sixteen foot deep building. I'm sorry, Chris. That's twenty foot is your basic minimum because you need to get in front and behind the car. You can't touch the wall. Uh, i- in, unless there's some other way to reconfigure this, you're never going to get too deep. Unless maybe your garage is really deep as it stands, but.
Well, I also, I'm not so, I'm not really comfortable with granting a hardship of something that might happen eight years from now.
Right. And that's why I didn't.
That's not really, kind of a, that's not really something we can consider.
Right. And that's why I didn't bring it up. I, I brought a chip that, you know, they, they.
A lot, a circle back then, with, with that being disallowed, if you will. Would you consider less of a depth and more of a width to yield the same square footage at less of a variance? Or do you want us not to consider, in which case we just take it off the table and we're left with less options? But it doesn't mean there are no options and it does not mean that there are options. Before we close the hearing, we just basically want to hear how willing you are to move. And again, I'm going to reiterate, if you don't like the answer, you can definitely come back, just like raising canes. They asked for quite a variance and they came back with, honestly, uh, they went from an eighteen foot variance to a three foot variance. Those sorts of things are really easy for us. They're a little nip and tuck. This variance, especially with the potential usage on the roof, is a large ask, just being honest. It's not you, it's any resident that asked this. We would push back this hard.
No, I, I totally understand. I, I, I think the, the difference between a three foot variance and eleven foot variance to, you know, accomplish the, the, the goal is probably about the same in my book. Um, I wouldn't have brought this if I hadn't considered multiple, um, alternatives, sat down with an architect to consider those for us, talked to the Framington Valley Health Department that said, don't go anywhere near that side of the house. Um, so, uh, I, I prefer to review it as is, um, if that's all right with you.
Um, yeah, we won't consider that then. Okay. Does any other commissioners have any comments, uh, or questions of the applicant before we close the hearing? Hearing none. I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing for application ZBA twenty-three dash zero three of Christopher Quimby, owner for a variance to three point nine, assumes various zoning regulations to reduce the side yard setback from forty feet to twenty-nine feet for the construction of a garage addition of the property located at fifty-eight Terrace Plain Road. The zone is in R forty zone. Who would like to second the motion?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And that is unanimous. So no need for abstentions and, um, nays. Um, all right. So now this phase, we actually talk about what options are being presented to us. And of course, we can talk to town staff with any questions as far as legalities or what actually is transpiring. With someone else, I've sort of led with what my concept is and the potential meeting halfways, um, uh, not to say it, he seems to want us to just take it as presented or nothing. With that being said, it, it, a variance has to be requested for a hardship and a hardship, um, for additional storage is not necessarily, it does not, per our guidelines constitute a hardship. Um, so someone else take this away, because I feel like I'm being a jerk. Left out there all little things, guys.
Right. So the, the idea of, of needing more storage is the hardship is not um, a, a very strong hardship, quite frankly, um, with this large of a variance request. If it were a foot or two, it would be a different, frankly, an easier, an easier decision because our job really is to grant variances with hardships, the smallest possible variance we can possibly eke out of it. That's really what we're charged with doing. It doesn't, we aren't real, we're not charged with judging the aesthetic or any of that, really. That's not really our job. Um, it's more about minimizing variances because we set precedence with every decision we make.
Very well articulated. Um, anyone else with, again, we are deliberating amongst commissioners, so feel free to deliberate either for, or, you know, not to say against, I hate using that word, but either pro or con this application. And then we'll actually do the vote. Sharon, you look like you're going to say something. Say it.
Yes. So, so like has been said, um, I'm, I'm going to say, you know, where I stand, I personally wish they would, you know, take the option, you know, that was offered to go back and take a look at it. Um, but, you know, seeing that that wasn't their option, um, I, I know I, I couldn't support it because as has been said, it's not, you know, we, we are here and our purpose in being here is to grant, like you said, the smallest amount and, and that's not where we are right now.
Okay. Thank you very much for that input. Um, let's poll all the commissioners. So Josh, let's go to you next and just, you know, no preconditions, just what are you thinking?
Um, I think I, I really want to be able to say yes, but I, I think, I think it really just, if we could shift it that little bit or stretch it out, just that I think that would be the difference in my mind between being able to say this is the minimum smallest we can get away with versus a- as is, it's just, it's a little more than I think I could say yes.
The minimum, not to say it, that's, that's our task. Larry? Okay, let's go to Ram Kazza. Ram, you ready?
Yeah, um, like everyone else said, um, I mean, our job is to, you know, evaluate the hardship and um, approve with the minimal variance, but in this case, it's a big variance, so, um, I'm not sure at this point, yeah.
Fair enough. Larry Boardman, you with us?
Yeah, um.
You.
At, at this point, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support the variance on this one. I think there's got to be some more thought given to it, but it is, it's a hu- huge ask.
Okay. Hearing all comments from the commissioners, I am going to recommend that we table this application, which is lighter than a denial of the application. Um, I can't talk directly to the applicant, but perhaps Laura, um, or Brittany can relate to him, his options at this point. I think, Laura, can you give me some counseling on that?
Well, since you closed the public hearing, Mr. Chair, we can't present any alternatives after the fact. They would have to resubmit an application and we'd have to vote on this application.
Okay. Um, with that being said, in hearing, um, we have to make a final motion. Um, as with all motions, we make the motion in the affirmative and then you are free to vote nay. Well, how am I going to do it in the affirmative without a hardship or?
Well, we can state the hardship as it stated, it just might not support a yea or a yea vote. Right?
It's, let me toggle over to that. Do you, do you have a show, Ian?
The, the hardships are stated.
Go ahead.
The topog- the topography, the sloped property limits the buildable area on the lot. Shape of lot, the angled northern property line restricts the side yard on the side of the home and location of the septic tank limits the buildable area of their lot.
Do you want to re- replay that as a motion?
Okay, so I make a motion that we ex- we approve application number twenty-three oh three of Christopher Quimby, owner for a variance to three point nine of the sensory zoning regulations to reduce the side yard setback from forty feet to plus or minus twenty-nine feet for the construction of a garage addition at the property located at fifty-eight Terrace Plain Road in zone R forty, with the hardships being the topography of the sloped property limiting the buildable area on the lot. The shape of the lot is angled, northern property line restricts the side yard on the side of the home and the location of the septic tank limits the buildable area of their lot.
Okay. All those with a yea vote in the affirmative of passing this? Moving along, all those with a nay vote? Sorry.
Nay.
I'm a nay.
Nay.
And there's no one left to abstain. So I'm so sorry, um, Chris, who I can't talk to, but, um, you're welcome to talk to town staff and pursue this, but at tonight's meeting, unfortunately, we can't move forward. Um, so thank you very much for your time. I wish everyone the best. Let's move along to general commission business. The first order of business is the approval of our minutes from our April twenty-six, twenty twenty-three meeting. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them and has anyone found any corrections?
Yes.
Well, I reviewed them.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't, I didn't see anything. I didn't comb it with a fine tooth comb, but I didn't see anything.
And me.
Oh, wait, go ahead. Start combing. Sorry.
I left my comb upstairs.
Um, I don't have a comb, obviously. I just pat it down. All right. With that being said, I make a motion to approve the minutes from our April twenty-six, twenty twenty-three meeting. All those in favor? Aye.
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 And anyone abstaining? I think we're all there, right?
No, but we can, my understanding that, my understanding in another meeting, like for my board of ed is that we can still vote. I mean, we can still, you know, approve the minutes, right? Even if we weren't there.
Even if you weren't there?
Yes. Yes.
Laura?
She's correct. As long as, um, it's helpful if you, you should have watched the video and have a substantial understanding that the ma- the minutes reflect what happened, but yes.
Okay. With that being said, Amanda, I am sure I have screwed, messed you up. I apologize for that. Uh, do you want me to retake the vote or did you catch how everyone voted?
I, from what I gathered, everyone voted yes.
In the affirmative, yes, I agree.
Okay. Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, other general commission business, um, is there are two people on this call which, um, or Zoom, which are very pertinent. I think everyone, I hope everyone at least is aware of, if not has met Brittany, um, who is now our assistant town planner. Um, so that's her. Well, if you have the same square confickeration in the top right corner, we look forward to working with her. She's. So that's her. Well, if you have the same square confickeration in the top right corner, we look forward to working with her. She's been here for a little while. Brittany, how long have you been here?
Yeah, this is my fourth week here.
About a month. We'll go a month at this point.
Come on.
However, whenever you need anything, of course, she will be down at Town Hall. Um, in that same sentence, when you're down at Town Hall, Laura Barkowski has taken an opportunity, which is a great opportunity. She's going to become a town planner in and of herself, the top poncho position. Um, it is, uh, so I wish her the absolute best. Congratulations, and it's been a pleasure to work with you, and hopefully at some point, we're going to see you at some land planning conference.
Where are you going, Laura?
No, I was going to say, is it in a different town?
Where are you going?
Where are you going?
It is a different town, and I would just, could we adjourn the meeting? And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
Good point. Now, let's keep it going. All right, with that being said, let's uh, I'll throw out the motion to adjourn. Someone second it?
Can second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
And it is unanimous. Thank you very much.